Finally passed seven.
Yeah.
Two minutes after.
It's like my camera's been on for a while.
I can hear now.
Hit the speaker. Get here, Pete.
You can go when you're ready to go.
You can probably start if you want.
Let's see. This is the public hearing. And we start by having a very important time here remotely. And that means with all votes, these are all votes. And you know, starting with the moment of appreciation and our people sort of serving our country. Our first item is a public hearing solicitor license request from us. Emerald Sun Run Solar.
Do you need to take the podium? Do you want it?
Hello.
Hello, would you tell us about your proposal?
Somebody has to sound down.
Thank you.
Well, I'm Tom Amaro, I live in Medway. I've been in the solar business for about four years. I've sold solar throughout Medway. Millis Franklin Norfolk. And I'm interested in doing the same here in Medfield.
And what will you turn into six weeks' worth?
Sorry, couldn't. Oh, just normal working hours, you know. Eight in the morning, eight thirty till, we usually do it till dusk. So, you know, six thirty. Usually don't go much later than that. I'm sorry, Monday through Saturday. Oh, well, Frank, I'd love to have the permit for a year. Franklin gives him for a year, Medway gives him for six months. I mean, it's just a, it's just an inconvenience to have to keep coming back. But so for as long as you guys, as long as you give them, you know, as historically have given them or, or a year, please.
I think we typically have been doing three months, right?
I think we've been doing three months, yeah.
Three, we've been doing three and if there's no issues, a renewal without you having to be present. Right. And just being fair to this, there's been probably five presentations in the last year.
Yeah, but going for a year, the problem is with people coming in for licenses. It's, it's got to be hard for us to remember who we've authorized. And then sometimes they disappear for months and all of a sudden somebody comes, they start again and then people go, who is this? And it's like, I don't remember. So, but, but the idea of there's no complaints, being able to renew it without having to show up, I think that's fine.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And Tom, is it just you?
Yes, just me.
Okay. And then you check in with the chief and the team when you're out?
Every town is different. A lot of towns, you, you call in, simply report to the, you know, the police department, the dispatcher, that you're going to be at a, in a given area and roughly the times that you expect to be there.
Having said that, I could swear we've given somebody from Sun Run Solar a license within the last six months. I, not that that's a problem, but I thought we had already.
I need to go back.
This is why you don't do it for a year because it's like.
You may have, so when you work for Sun Run, you're not exclusive. You don't have exclusive facility to an area.
And, but you're also not, you don't coordinate?
No.
Oh, so you guys are independent contractors and, oh, wow, okay.
Okay. Happens to be, I just saw a Sun Run Solar car at the center of town last week. Perhaps that was yours.
You'll see a lot of them. And where they're, Sun Run's the largest in the country, so.
Okay.
Almost a million residential installs, so.
Okay, okay.
Publicly traded company and New York Stock Exchange, so it's not a, we do a good job.
Good.
Any more questions there in the room?
I'm good.
You have a motion there?
Ah, okay, motion.
We just need you to close the hearing first.
I think that was to conclude the hearing closed, is that what we're doing?
Correct.
Oh, my goodness.
Hearing closed, we have a motion.
Okay. So I motion to approve the solicitor's license request from Tom Amaro for Sun Run Solar?
Second.
Oh, sorry, okay. So let me just give a little edit there, Pete. Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to sunset for a three-month period? Good?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I'm pointing him to though.
Second.
All those in favor, then we do a roll call vote. Chris Murphy?
Aye.
Ellen Murphy?
Aye.
Professor Peterson, aye. Thank you for coming, sir.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening, everybody.
Next we have Chief Barrett to discuss our request for a provisional promotion. The most important sergeant to follow up from Allen, Dr. Souza, for.
Remember the source of his microphone is, he needs to get closer to it.
Yeah.
Pete, do you think you can get closer to your microphone? We're having a problem hearing you here.
Oh, well, my ears, okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, how are you?
Good evening.
So this is an exciting day for our department, we should say that. It's a really joyous kind of occasion when we do these types of things. I would like to explain why I'm here and the reason for it. This is a little bit different from a typical promotion. As you know, or may have heard from the last warrant committee meeting, we do all of our promotional testing with civil service. Unfortunately, this last year, they had one of their promotional tests challenged in court and they lost the hearing. As a result, they had to nullify their list for promotions and are currently unable to produce another test at this time. So it's leaving a lot of agencies and I feel terribly for my colleagues who put the time and effort, six months studying, just to see that kind of squandered away. But it's putting departments like ours in a position where we really need first-line leadership. Your supervisors, your sergeants are the people that impressed my vision down to the patrolman and ensure that that's met and that the community's goals are met. We don't have that leadership right now and we don't have an ability to take a test. So what I'm requesting this evening is something that is permitted by civil service. It's called a provisional promotion. The promotion itself is just what it says. It is only for the time period until which a test can be administered. At that time, any of the officers who are provisionally promoted would have to pass the test and finish in the top in order to take that rank. Otherwise, the rank is rescinded at that point. We do have the option of trying to put together our own outside testing company to do the test. It's extremely expensive. There is a timeframe for which we want our officers to be able to study. And the second part of that, and I think where my, some of my reluctance comes from, is if the courts have just determined one testing process to have a disparate impact on certain groups, then I'd like to see a good test kind of get through and, and beat that challenge before we make a town investment or a budgetary investment. So this evening, the three officers that I'm going to request provisional promotions to are three people who, through their work performance, kind of peer review and my observations, I think have the experience and appreciation for what this town and this job has, what it needs. The first person is going to be Officer Wayne Salali. Wayne Salali graduated the police academy in 1995. He came to us in 2007. He has an associate's degree in criminal justice. Wayne is a certified MPTC instructor and regularly teaches in-service for veteran officers, as well as our firearms, less lethal, first aid and CPR instructor. As you may recall, Wayne recently won the life-saving medal for his very heroic actions that he took at a motor vehicle collision up on South Street Extension. The second candidate I propose to you this evening would be Officer Joshua Souza. Officer Souza graduated the police academy in 2013. He came to us in 2001. He has an associate's degree and is currently working on his bachelor's degree for criminal justice. Officer Souza is an Eagle Scout and also the recipient of the Medal of Valor for his participation at a tragic officer-involved shooting at a prior police department. Is one of the highest honors that can be given. The third candidate is Officer Ledbetter. Officer Ledbetter had actually applied for this police department previous to when he was selected. He did not meet the civil service requirement for residency by one month. He had been in the town for 11 months and we were unable to hire him as a result of that one-month non-residency. He did apply with us a second time and came to us in 2020. Prior to that, he worked at the Norfolk County Sheriff's Office. Officer Ledbetter also has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. So at this time, I would respectfully request that the board give us some frontline leadership and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Chris, you want to start?
My main comment is I've been interested in seeing the leadership ranks get filled in, in the police department for some time now. So I'm delighted that you all are willing to serve in that capacity and definitely impressed with the background. So glad to, glad to see you here tonight.
Elaine?
I will echo the same sentiment. I'm thrilled for you gentlemen, and I, hopefully I can say this, like the fact that Garrett, you're staying on board, I'm thrilled. That says volumes of where, where the department's going and I'm really happy for the three gentlemen here tonight. And it's an honor to have you here and I just appreciate everything you do for the town and know that the town genuinely appreciates everything you do, the time, the, the hours, the, the attitude, the, the way you present the town, it's just that you genuinely appreciate it.
So I'll just fall in line and agree with my colleagues, I can't see through there. Sorry that I didn't recognize that you were there in the room. Thank you for being part of the Metro Police Department and I'm happy to support this myself. Any further?
If I could just ask, one at a time, is that a vote then? Did you have to vote? Yes, okay.
All right, so I motion, I'll show you, use the recording here, all right.
Is there any reason we can't just roll it all through here once?
For picture-taking opportunities, we're going to do one at a time.
It's a good reason.
All right, so we'll go with the first motion for the provisional promotion to Sergeant Salal. Do I want to say the full name or just officer?
Wayne Salal.
Okay, Wayne Salal.
Wayne, if you'd like to step up?
You have to have a.
Second.
That's why I was waiting for a little.
Roll call vote.
Professor Barrett?
Aye. Aye.
Chris Murphy?
Aye.
Professor Peterson, aye.
We're going to get better by the second.
I can hear that. Can't control. Make sure it don't hurt you guys.
So we typically do. And it's that we don't stop them.
All right, and Lisa, the original.
They'll take her.
Do I close it or just leave it? Okay, all right, that's good.
Give me one more.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Sergeant. We have another motion for Professor Souza.
Yes, so, you ready? So a motion for provisional promotion to Sergeant Joshua Souza.
Second.
And Select Board Member?
Aye.
Select Board Member Murphy?
Aye.
I can have, can I just put this? I'm glad you know what we're doing. I'll get this unlocked for you. Congratulations, that's awesome. Find the red pocket here. You have a great look, you have. I want to drop blood, it was totally. To go down there. It looks so easy, right? Are you, are you the Eagle Scout?
Yeah.
Okay, when I watch him with the Eagle Scout, I think it's trouble to the children, so.
Hello, I'm only doing that one.
Oh, your parents here?
Yeah.
He drove all the way up.
Don't kill your.
We can certainly give you a picture a moment ago.
Oh, come on up. I'll take a picture.
Okay, that's it.
All right, as they say, well, my nieces and nephews, work it, baby, come on. Congratulations. Congratulations, that's awesome. Thank you very much. Very congratulations.
Congratulations, Sergeant Souza. Thank you for being part of the Medfield Police Department. Next, we need a motion for Garrett Ledbetter.
All right, so I motion a provisional promotion to Sergeant for Garrett Ledbetter.
Second.
Select Board Member Murphy?
Aye.
Select Board Member Murphy?
Aye.
Professor Peterson, aye. Congratulations, Sergeant Ledbetter.
See if I the third one.
I got it unlocked. Congratulations, that's awesome.
Just what I leans to at all.
It's all right, I can look at this. I'll let you do the rest of that later on. Congratulations. Nicely done.
Gentlemen, you are just, you know, since having your parents sit through all this.
All right, that's awesome, congratulations.
Yep, just a couple of quick things. Thank you so much. It's so important for our people to have career growth and opportunity. And I just appreciate the board's willingness to kind of recognize that we need this position right now and, and give, give these three the opportunity.
That's awesome.
Thank you for putting our way through that, for the service, for the problems.
Yeah.
I want, I want to know who the recruit is that we've got on the wings here.
I know, I love the little guy in the back.
But listen, that's your next chief right there. Your wife's friend is bad.
I love it.
So on March 23rd, the Pedestrian and Traffic Safety Advisory Board, I did manage to get that out, that's a big one, met to discuss some of our agenda items. First and foremost, I do want to thank the community for their patience with this. We hadn't had a meeting in a while as we kind of figured out who our new members were going to be. So again, it took us a little bit of time, so I appreciate the community understanding that we were going through a process. And I also want to thank the committee itself because it was a very long meeting. During our meeting, we did discuss a plethora of items and have a couple of recommendations, maybe some information for the board. One of the requests placed on the agenda was a request for a stop sign at Adams Street where it intersects with Cottage. And I'm finally going to break it down and ask, is it Vinold, Vinyl?
Vinyl.
Vinyl.
Vinyl, thank you. Where it also meets at Cottage. The request stemmed from a motor vehicle accident that had occurred there. Truthfully, the intersection itself wasn't a contributing factor with the collision. It was actually an operator error issue. And we don't have a tremendous amount of accidents there, but what the board unanimously agreed, or the committee unanimously agreed, was that the location itself does lend itself to believing that both parties can cross over. So Adams has kind of a little jog to go to Cottage, I'm sorry, to go to Vinyl, and then Cottage comes through. Because it's an area that's very narrow roadways, a lot of homes close together and right near the schools, we just thought that this was one of the times to err in the side of caution. And I am going to request, as was recommended, that stop signs be placed at both Adams where it intersects with Cottage and Vinyl where it intersects with Cottage.
Questions, Chris?
I, you know, before I ever moved to Medfield, I'd never lived anywhere that had so many uncontrolled intersections. And when I first moved in, it was the West Mill Harding Street intersection. I think one of the very first times I came down West Mill, said, hey, there's no stop sign. This is weird, it's a T-intersection, but I guess I've got the right of way. Fortunately, I realized that probably that was a bad assumption with the car that was coming up Harding Street that didn't slow down. After a while, you get used to certain intersections not have, you, you kind of know that's what we've done, but to be honest, anybody who, like me, that came in from out of town, I can see, we probably aren't better off with a whole lot of intersections being uncontrolled, so. To me, if that's something that would help reduce confusion at a time when we probably have more traffic than we have years ago, that makes sense to me.
Same here, I know the intersection, I know it well, and it is a funny little jog that you could think that it's one continuous road. And especially as like somewhat of a blind view because you're coming up over the, the railroad tracks from, from Ferry Street, so makes sense.
I think it makes sense as well. Do we have a motion on this one?
All right, so motion to add stop sign at Adams as it intersects with Cottage and a stop sign at Vinyl as it intersects with Cottage.
Second.
Select Board Member Murphy?
Aye.
Select Board Member Murphy?
Aye.
Professor Peterson, aye as well.
Thank you, and the next couple of things are just some updates for you. As you know, we've tried to identify, well, we did identify several streets in town that are greatly affected by pedestrian activity and cyclist activity. So we spoke about Pine Street, Phillips Street and Causeway Street. These are all kind of similar in their design, narrow winding roadways, and they are heavily. These are all kind of similar in their design, narrow winding roadways, and they are heavily used by pedestrian and cyclist traffic. So the committee kind of as a group decided this was a much bigger conversation than a single meeting that was full of agenda items was going to be able to address. So we discussed breaking down kind of each area and addressing it individually, particularly on Causeway. Causeway just has, you know, the area up by the trails, then a couple of straightaways. So each area kind of has a different need. At this point in time, we did have, we had Director Goulet put together a couple of signs just to identify where the trail entrances are. We are recommending to the board to put some line painting on the street, just as another visual cue for people to recognize that there are trails entering and exiting onto the roadway. So that would be the first recommendation. I don't actually think, it's not a crosswalk, so I don't think we need approval.
Not a crosswalk, yeah, just gonna be some signage.
And the second thing is, we're looking at the sign placement at North and 109 for right turn after stop. We were in agreement that the placing of the sign being across from the street, it's a kind of a wide intersection, and the crosswalk is pretty far off to the right. So to see that sign there doesn't really alert a driver that they're gonna be taking a right and that there's a crosswalk they have to be paying attention to. So the recommendation to the board was to move that sign forward so that they could see it and potentially clarify that it's a right turn lane after stop. To do that for both North Street turning right onto 109 and 109 turning right onto North.
So when you say move forward, right now it's across the intersection, like in front of the bank, I'm thinking of the, North to 109, it's across the street in front of the bank. When you say moving it forward to that corner, on the other side of 109?
So that as you're approaching the light, you see it right there.
Exactly.
So that when you're gonna take that turn.
Okay. Works for me.
Alright, those are the only two updates that are...
So we don't have to vote on that, that just gonna happen? Can we, or do we have to vote on that?
I think a vote would be nice.
Before we do that, I wanna go back to the not crosswalk that's paint on the road, that was a new one on me. So what will the paint be that's not a crosswalk?
We're just looking at doing potentially a solid color, just identify the entrance.
Okay. Okay.
A crosswalk, as you know, would require a ton of ADA compliance, and we would have to have that marked differently. So this is more just to signal that there's a trail entrance.
Yeah, just to alert drivers that there may be people within that area coming out of the trailhead. And there'll be some new signage and alerting people to those trails as well.
Okay. Works for me, okay.
So I can go with motion to street painting?
Who's that, Pete?
Said yes please.
So motion, street painting to indicate trail entrance on Noon Hill as well as motion to... Re...
Relocate.
Relocate, that would be the word I'm looking for. Better sign placement for right turn after stop at Main and North intersection.
One quick question, is that crosswalk the one to the trail on Noon Hill? Or is it the crosswalk on Causeway where the trail goes across Causeway? Or is it both?
Oh gosh, I have to go by the trail.
It's Causeway.
It's Causeway.
It's Causeway.
It's Causeway.
It's Causeway, not Noon Hill.
Yeah.
Noon Hill isn't paved.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's right, you're right, where the entrances are, that's...
It's Causeway. So we're gonna restate that as motion to street paint to indicate trail entrances on Causeway?
Right.
Yes, please.
You finished? Second.
Second again, okay. And to relocate the sign for the right-hand turn after stop at Main and North intersection.
Second.
And Select Board Member Murphy?
Aye.
Select Board Member Murphy?
Aye.
Chief is aye as well. Chief, I would ask, maybe sometime you might take a look at the right turn when you're on 109 at South Street, my brother's market. There's never been a right turn on red there, I always thought there probably could be.
There is, you can go right on red from South to 109, you just can't go right on red from 109 to South.
Right. Coming out of South, you can do the right turn, Pete, if that's what you're talking about.
I believe the law is...
No, I'm talking about when you're, it's our brother's market.
There's one that says no right in front of Brother's Market.
No, you can't go right from 109 onto South, correct.
Right, that one I think would be problematic, if you wanted to make that one a right turn on red. Because there's cars that park all the way up to, I'm not a traffic safety person, but driving that, I can see why there wasn't one there because the parking goes all the way up to the corner. I understand the argument to do it, but I can see why that one might not be...
I would put that in your hands and your department's hands to evaluate whether that makes sense or not.
We can certainly put it on the next agenda, absolutely. And I just wanted to point out, as you may have recalled, I talked about my officers, some of them had asked to grow beards. They volunteered to do the Special Olympics, and they did that this past Friday. They had a fantastic time, I was down there with them, it was just a great cause, and it was a lot of fun for everybody involved.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Alright, that's good. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thanks, Chief, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
That's all the information, Chief.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kathy McGowan, Director of Medfield Outreach, to request the Select Board to sign the Raising the Bar Licensing Agreement. Kathy?
Thanks, Pete, good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight on behalf of Medfield Outreach, specifically our prevention programming, seeking passage or signing of the Raising the Bar Licensing Agreement. And just briefly to let you know what Raising the Bar is, is as part of our prevention efforts, we partner with different sectors of the community to reduce youth substance use. And Raising the Bar is an initiative that we found in Marin County in California, which, it's a voluntary program, which requests parents, sporting events, schools, to partner to remain substance-free at youth events, not adult events, but youth events. And this partnership, we pay for out of the grant proceeds. And it allows us to use their program, their logo, their toolkit, et cetera, starting from the date effective on the contract until they can revoke it in writing as outlined in the agreement. And that's the reason I'm here this evening.
Plus questions?
No, I think if I remember, this was under discussion back when we were doing the strategic thing, so...
It sure was, yes.
No questions?
Aline?
Yep, no questions at all, I went, read through it, and I do call a conversation, so no, this is great.
I'm fine with it too, so we can have a vote in there?
Alright, so motion for the Select Board to sign the Raising the Bar Licensing Agreement?
Second.
Select Board Member Murphy?
Aye.
Select Board Member Murphy?
Aye.
I have an aye as well. Nice.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you Kathy.
Thanks Kathy.
Have a good night.
Our next item is the review and potential vote to send Medfield Energy Committee letter. And I thought I would just bring it since I had sort of missed a lot of this. In addition to the draft letter that's in the materials, there's a letter from the Energy Committee to the Select Board, which basically seems to be to address everything in the draft Select Board letter. I think one of the issues is that there's a question as to whether or not there were errors or misinformation in the draft Select Board letter. My suggestion is, if we're in agreement that the Energy Committee letter addresses things sufficiently, at this point, I wouldn't get into micro-managing the details of what was and was not correct at this point. I suggest that we just go forward to going ahead rather than looking at what happened. So my suggestion would be to withdraw the Select Board draft letter this evening. I think that it can have some sort of damaging effect on the relationships with the volunteers in town. So that's my suggestion. Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I'm in total disagreement with you on that, Pete. If we, I appreciate the Energy Committee's efforts in making suggestions, I guess, for us. And perhaps, I actually appreciate the comments they made at the front, where they recognized that they had made some errors. But the guidance that's in our letter needs to be very specific. It addresses five separate areas that have been problems in the past. I think it's important that the Energy Committee has clear understanding of what the Selectmen expect, or the Board, Select Board expects of the Energy Committee and how it conducts its activities. So the back part of our letter is specifically what I absolutely wanna make sure they have to where there's no confusion about what is and isn't acceptable. It's just, we had guidance in place that was less formally conveyed earlier and as a practical matter. The guidance was violated, whether intentional or by mistake, I don't know. And I don't care for that matter, I care more that the expectations are very clear between us and the committee. Because I think that is what will prevent us from having volunteers get discouraged when they get called to task for doing things that perhaps they didn't understand they couldn't do.
Aline?
I agree with everything Gus just said, and I think what really struck me is, we sat here in a meeting and we shared our concerns. We said that there would be a letter to help guide to make sure that there, I mean, this is a huge project, right? And no one, as I said in the meeting that week, and I'll say it again tonight, no one did anything with any ill intent. But the fact of the matter is, thank goodness we have a good partner in Trinity, and they're not looking for ways to try to trip this thing up. But I think our letter sends clear guidance, it's not accusing anybody of anything, but it supports the message that what the committee's role is. It complements them very nicely because they've done a phenomenal job in this town. But with this project, there cannot be any gray area with who and when we communicate with this developer. There's too much on the line between, let alone the 334 apartments. We have the Belforge that, if this doesn't happen, Belforge crumbles. And there's way too much going on with Belforge and unbelievable momentum. So I think it's within our bounds to send the letter, we said we would. We also said that we would copy Trinity, so Trinity understands the message that we're sending. And I appreciate the fact that I actually watched the meeting that the Energy Committee had, where they talked about the letter and sending it to us. So I think it's fine, we received a letter from them, we didn't get the letter out to them. You know, I know we need to delay it until this meeting, and we have. But I don't move from what I agreed to in the original meeting, which was with Hilly and Jim here, that we had stated that we would be sending a letter, that we would be drafting it to them and copying Trinity, and I stayed true to that, I don't think there's any reason to not do that.
I would suggest it's a bad thing to do, I think there are a lot of errors in the draft that have been circulated, and some misinformation there. Certainly, it accuses me of being subverted, and I legitimately, it was in no way subverted by anything that happened.
Hey Pete, I didn't accuse you of being subverted, I actually complimented you on having the good judgment to not sign on to that letter. So there was no accusation in the prior meeting about your actions. In fact, it was my extreme concern about an attempt to subvert any member of this Select Board by drawing them into something like this that would have been just, it would have basically invalidated your role in anything that has to do with this. So it wasn't a criticism of you.
I misunderstood what I was asked about. What I was asked about had nothing to do with supporting Trinity's project at all. It had to do with the National Historic Park Service regulations being out of date, and wouldn't it be a good idea to have them get updated so that they were more energy efficient? Certainly, that's a very...
So Pete, just so, so you may be right, maybe I misunderstood this. I understood that you had been asked to sign on to the letter that was published in the patch. You're saying that's not what you were asked to do?
You know, it's been some times since I had that discussion, I didn't keep any notes of it, Gus. So I thought that Fred was asking me about reaching out to the Park Service because the Park Service regulations don't allow for energy efficiency. I don't remember if he asked me if I wanted to sign on to the letter to the patch or not.
Well, alright, that was not the information I had, but that's...
The patch has been mischaracterized, it was an expression of individual people's expressions on an issue.
Pete, Pete...
Characterized as being from the Energy Committee, which it never was.
Pete, I listened, I listened to the meeting of the building pillar, where the information that went into this letter was discussed. And at no time did the people who were discussing that say it was a personal statement, and they were discussing it within their own meeting. I listened to the most recent Energy Committee meeting where, when they said it was a personal letter and it was not a statement of the Energy Committee, and Fred Davis said, "Well, actually, this is the position of the Energy Committee." I don't really think there's a lot of good that comes out of rehashing that. My point was really around drawing you into it.
I mean, and that's what we're doing, is rehashing it.
Right, so let's not do that.
Alright.
To the extent you think there's anything in our draft letter that is misinformation or incorrect, I would appreciate it if you really, if you really think that there's something misinformation or incorrect in this draft letter, I would actually appreciate it to get your feedback on that or your edits to this that would address anything you think is misinformation. Because I don't think there's anything in here that is. But that could be a blind spot.
I think the letter is a waste, I think the letter is a waste of time, and as I've said, I think it's destructive with town relationships.
I think a letter is crucial, but...
So I'll give you a list, Gus, I made some notes of things.
Okay. So, which...
Working behind the scenes, there was no working behind the scenes. People were talking to people to get information. I know that one of the touchpoints was that Jim Nail talked to a man who formerly worked for Trinity, I think, because he is Chair or President of the Passat House of Massachusetts. There was no understanding that that man was gonna reach out to Trinity, I don't think.
So what we've done to clear that up in here, Pete, is to say that if anybody has a contact like that, whether it's intentional or unintentional, it needs to be reported immediately. That's just way over line.
Something I said tonight...
If I contact somebody, I'm supposed to report to you that I contacted them?
Well, this is being, this is directed at the Energy Committee, so that's, it was really intended to be the members of the Energy Committee, not necessarily directed at you. But to be honest, Pete, if any one of us wound up getting into some sort of a conversation with a former Trinity official, and in that conversation it became clear that that former Trinity official was going to go and talk to Trinity about this project, yes, I would expect any one of us to let each other know, and I would expect us to let the Development Committee know about that. Because, not because we're doing anything nefarious, but because that's a contact that's a big deal.
Well, I don't know the details of it, well enough to know whether Jim was aware that that man was gonna go out to Trinity or not, but...
We established during, during the meeting we had, we established that Jim knew what he was doing. I asked him in two different times whether he, whether he, once he knew he was gonna do that, I said, "Then what did you respond with?" So he knew that's what he was planning to do. Whether he drew him out, or whether he just said, "Well, let me go talk to him," I don't know.
I think it's really important to state...
Individual in order to get information about Passat House. And this person then apparently took it upon himself, I think is the way that happened.
I don't accept that we were not aware that that's exactly what he was gonna do. And I don't accept that there was no happiness around that. Because if we didn't think that was appropriate, which I absolutely think was inappropriate, the proper thing to have done was to say, "Listen, I don't want you going in and getting involved in this. We have, we have a negotiation going on, we have an effort going on here. It wouldn't be appropriate for you to go in and try to go over the head of the project manager to do something that I would like to see happen, but that Trinity itself has not planned." It's just, it's just total misconduct.
I don't know the details of how it all unfolded, so that I'm not the best person able to speak to it. But I think that's, I think that's an area where the letter is... But I think that that's, I think that's an area where the letter is probably an error.
Nope. I disagree with that.
I disagree.
I disagree with that, Pete, emphatically. That if you were sitting here that night and you, and you watched and listened to the dialogue, we clearly got the signal that they were talking and then they were hoping that that person would be a mouthpiece. And what this letter is clearly stating is, and I said that night, I, the one thing you should have said is, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, don't go back to anybody at Trinity and talk to anybody about Trinity what we just talked about. That's not our role, that's not our responsibility. There's Sarah Repose's role until another body's name is the person that is the touchpoint. You're not, I'm not, Gus isn't, that we're not supposed to do it. No one in the subcommittee or committee should be doing it." So it's, this letter just clearly redefines what direction. I don't think that that Hilly had an issue with the idea that we were going to send a letter to clearly redefine, because Trinity is a big project. This isn't one small development that's going to have a minor impact in this town. This is significant, and, and I can tell you, if I was Trinity and I watched that recording, I would want to make sure that I'm getting something from the Select Board of Medfield that signed an LDA that supports the message that was sent that night. This is not kicking anybody. Those volunteers, the Energy Committee, as we said that night, and I'll say over and over again, nobody did anything with ill intent. But when you get passionate and you get dug into a hole and you start looking at things, sometimes you forget what your real role is, and you just need to be real backed in and to look. This letter clearly defines what can and cannot be done. It's not malicious. It's, you can think that there are things in there that maybe are not stated correctly. I have no problem with how it's stated. I think it follows true to the conversation we had that night, and I genuinely, even watching the Energy Committee meeting last week, I don't think that a very large portion of that board has a problem with this whatsoever. I think they want to put this behind them. I think that they just want to have this on file, it's good to go, but this Trinity project is monumental and we, I just think there's nothing wrong with this. It's not attacking anybody on that committee. It's clearly defining roles and responsibilities. So it's, it, there's no, there's, we are not going to bury this and not follow through what we said that night.
The letter has a very aggressive accusatory tone. It's a very unfortunate position to take with another town board, I think, and your town volunteers. So that, from that standpoint alone, I don't, I think it's a bad thing to go forward with. I think that, and as I said originally, the Energy Committee letter, I think, answers everything that was raised and is...
The fact that you'd say that, Pete...
The letter actually made a series of mistakes. I'll just go down the rest of my list of mistakes that you had, or Gus.
Mm-hmm.
Just get those on the record then for you.
Mm-hmm.
Let's see. Documents need Energy Committee approval. Well, I mean, I don't think that the letter that was sent out was an Energy Committee letter. Certainly, there may be any Energy Committee meaning that I was not.
So, so to that point, Pete, I, which is...
I'll just finish my list for you, please.
Okay, sure.
Let's see. There was the issue about the Energy Committee not subverting the Select Board. Oh, so, let's see. No, that's the issue that everything is to be submitted by the, to the Select Board via the Town Administrator. I think one of the, one of the issues that underlies this whole thing that happened is that the Energy Committee was submitting information to Sarah and it just wasn't getting responded to. So I think there was a little bit of a glitch in the whole process about things were being handled in the development at the hospital, unfortunately. So that there was an attempt to provide good information to make a better project that just wasn't getting, or, or getting addressed. Let's see.
Well, but, but Pete, if, even if that was a problem...
I'll just finish my list, please. There was something about the Energy Committee did not attempt to influence Trinity's contractor choices, and there was clearly, I don't think there's been any desire to do that.
You did watch Jim on that, Pete.
And new ecology, as someone who would bring the weight, information to bear on the project. And I know that there was also some, some sense that the contractor chosen the look that the distributive biothermal system didn't really have the proper background, and that that was affected their, their suggestions. Let's see. Energy Committee did not publish things, or Energy Committee has approved it, and I don't think that's an issue. What appeared was a personal opinion, not the Energy Committee opinion. The Energy Committee is not to reach out to the political representatives. I think that was being done by individuals, not by the Energy Committee. And then, I guess, again, same statement, but the Energy Committee is not to support Select Board members, and that just didn't happen, so. Okay, go ahead, Gus.
First off, Pete, the things that you have just said have reinforced my opinion over and above everything that's come up so far, that this Energy Committee has a huge governance issue, and I will want us to address that when the right time comes down the road.
Yes.
The, the issue on the article, I'm skeptical that it wasn't an article that was an Energy Committee article, but accepting that it was the expression of two people, the request, what I specifically did in the discussion with the Energy Committee is I asked them to correct it. And there was, I did that deliberately. That is their call on what, if anything, they should do about that article. There are some reasons that I think they should consider doing something to clarify the article, and the main issue in it is that the article states that net zero is possible at the state hospital. At the meeting where this article was discussed, of the building pillar itself, Jim Nail specifically disagreed with Fred about that very issue and said, "No, it's not possible." So to have an article come out saying it is, co-written by someone who I literally heard in the meeting before it came out, say it wasn't, I think for the purposes of being clear and accurate, that was why I asked for that. There are some other things in that article that I think some members of the Energy Committee might look at and read carefully to be sure that that was actually what the Energy Committee intended to say, or for that matter, what those individuals intended to say. But I'll leave that for them to change. I just think in the case of something as sensitive as this, that was as confusing about whether this was or wasn't a statement from the Energy Committee not approved by the Energy Committee, or just personal, a personal statement, to the extent that that personal statement is not actually what the Energy Committee thinks, then the Energy Committee would, if I were on the Energy Committee, I would want to issue a statement of clarification. But that's up to them. I do think, relative to a discussion we had a year ago over the letter that went to the MSBA, that when someone on a, on a board or a committee is commenting on the work of that committee and is intending not to be commenting and representing the committee, but representing themselves alone, even if they identify themselves as a committee member, they should make clear in that statement that what's being expressed is a personal opinion and not the view of the committee, and that's precisely to avoid this kind of confusion.
So, I mean, we've had this discussion before about how I signed the letter to the MSBA.
Mm-hmm.
And I signed as myself, not as the Select Board of the Town of Medfield, Gus, and so they...
And we disagree, Pete. We disagree.
You sign, you sign things as the Select Board member. It gets, you know, it's just part of who we are.
What? When have I ever submitted a letter to a state agency while the town itself was in the middle of negotiations with that state agency, asking them to take a decision that the town was considering out of the town's hands by adopting a policy that would force the town to do something I thought the town should do? I have never done that.
Well, not with those specifics, but you know, I think we all...
You'd have to show me what you're talking about, Pete.
...state that we are Select Board members, certainly, and that's correct. But you know, in all of these instances, you're jumping to a conclusion that's just not there, that by my signing something, or by you signing something, or Eileen signing something, it means that it's a Select Board decision. It's, it's not. It's just our own personal opinion. We're just putting a label on ourselves.
And when I, and Pete, when I asked, when I asked you to send a letter and to clarify that point to the MSBA, your answer was, "I think there's no need for me to do that." I think there was a clear intention to make it sound like Medfield was behind that, because it was listed under Medfield, along with all these other towns. That's even, even a worse letter for us to rehash, because that goes back a year. So you and I clearly disagree on what the proper conduct is when any one of us expresses a personal opinion to promote something that is perhaps, at least not adopted by the town. We just disagree. And every time it comes up, you're going to hear from me if it happens? And every time I bring it up, you're going to say, "I don't think it's a problem." I get that. But we disagree on what the proper conduct is when someone is expressing a personal opinion, when they are also an official or a member of an active board that works in that same area. That's all. If I go to a meeting and I speak, a town meeting, and something comes up and I speak, I say, "I'm only expressing my personal opinion here. This is not, I don't know what Pete and Eileen think." I actually try pretty hard to do that. So we're not going to get anywhere on this one, Pete, because we didn't agree a year ago and we're still not agreeing. I think we just recognized that both of us are going to lock horns on that every time it happens, if it happens this way. It's not an effective strategy for any committee member to follow if they want my support as a selectman for the things that they do. You'll be fine. I will not.
So the letter.
So this letter, I don't want to not do the letter. Pete, if there's tone, if you want to try re-editing this letter to take any tone issues out of it that you think would give it a better tone, I'm good with that. I will, the main thing I want them to see, and they will see it because they've seen our draft undoubtedly, the five items that are the specific guidance is the thing that I really care about.
Yep.
And however we position it up front, I'm not trying to accuse anybody up front, it's just those five items are the clear guidance that we said we would give to the Energy Committee, and we also gave the Energy Committee the option of asking for further guidance because Hilly had said, "You know, we don't really know what you want us to do in some areas." And it's like, "That's fine. We can add to it." But if you would like, if there's something about the tone that you would like to edit, to revise this, I'm happy...
I don't, I don't, I have no interest in editing this letter. I have no interest, I mean, part of this letter.
Okay.
I literally don't support this letter.
Then we should just take a vote.
It's destructive.
Yeah.
And I think it's already been answered by what the Energy Committee has sent back. I think they've already agreed to your five points, Gus, so I don't think it's...
So we should just, just to be clear...
Go forward.
Then let's take a vote on whether we approve the letter, and we'll, we'll fill in the date and go with this. If you don't, if you don't have anything you want to change in the letter, we disagree with you, Pete, so I think we're just going to issue it.
So I motion that we send the Medfield Energy Committee letter that is in the packet this evening from the Select Board.
Second.
Select Board Member Murry.
Aye.
Select Board Member Murphy.
Aye.
Peterson is a no on this one.
Okay.
Our next action items, vote on the use of ARPA funds for the installation of a video conferencing in Chenery Hall and the Public Safety Training Room for $9,287.
So this is an idea we've been talking about for a while. Anybody who has been to a meeting, the owl works great in a small meeting room. It's, you know, it's helped us through some tight spots as we were doing this remote and hybrid. Now that hybrid for boards and committees has been extended through 2025, we've seen a tremendous amount of participation, being able to offer hybrid. We thought maybe after three years, it's time for a permanent solution. So we are recommending a solution for this room and for the Public Safety Building as well. So, better cameras and better microphones. Anybody who was at the Planning Board meeting recently realized that a large room like that needs more than just one owl.
Is there anything like this going in at school?
I don't know if they're planning on putting anything into the library where they have their meetings. Yeah.
That's the other large place that coordinates.
Yeah. I don't know if Owen's planning on it. I know we've been working with him on our two solutions, so maybe we're the pilot for him before he puts it in at the schools.
Anything for that, Gus?
I'm good with it.
I'm good.
Yep.
Eileen?
I am good. Makes sense.
Me too. We did a motion that, Eileen.
All right. So motion to use the ARPA funds for the installation of a video conferencing in Chenery Hall and the Public Safety Training Room for $9,287.
Second.
Mr. Murry.
Aye.
Ms. Murphy.
Aye.
Peterson's an a to.
Great.
Our next item is a vote on the determination by appointing authority as required by Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 268A, Section 19 for the Town Administrator Christine Torrell. Chris, you want to fill us in on this?
So for the background on this, this is, I was nominated by my peers in December of 2022. I sought your permission before I accepted my nomination to be on the Board of Directors for the MIA Property and Liability Insurance. I was elected in January. I'm hoping I had two of my selectman votes at that meeting. My Board of Directors position is an unpaid position with MIA. I just attended my first official meeting as a board member. We had orientation last month, and this was part of the orientation, that I need to file this paperwork. I have no financial interest, however, MIA Property and Casualty has an interest in that we've done business with them since 1982. So I'm looking for a written determination that you don't believe that I have any financial interest and won't, in fact, my, my decision-making.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions, Gus?
No, I'm certainly, in my view, I don't think there's any conflict here that is of any significance, and so I don't view this as any kind of a disqualifying situation.
Yeah, same.
Eileen?
Yeah, I have no issue whatsoever. I completely agree. The relationship's been around for 40 years, so I think we're good. We're solid.
I have no problem with this either, so can I have a motion, please?
All right. So I move that as the appointing authority of Town Administrator Christine Treewiler, as required by MGL Chapter 268A, Section 19, we have reviewed this matter and the financial interests as identified by Christine Treewiler. We have determined that the financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the Town of Medfield may expect from Ms. Treewiler.
Second.
Mr. Murry.
Aye.
Ms. Murphy.
Aye.
Peterson's an a to, so that passes. Thank you. Our next item is a vote to renew the annual ambulance service agreement with Metro West Medical Center. Chris?
So this is the...
We skipped the rate.
Oh, no, we skipped number seven, sorry.
Oh, all right, yeah. My apologies. Vote to MIA Health Benefits Trust renewal rate proposal for the upcoming year. Chris, that's you, too.
That is me. So just a little background on this. This is our health insurance that we offer to all of our employees, both school and town. 8.7% is an incredibly high increase, and that's based on our experience over the last 18 months. I did work with the Insurance Advisory Committee. I cannot commend Nancy Devino, Nancy McLaughlin enough. They did a tremendous job. We brought Blue Cross Blue Shield in, and we tried to do a very small plan design change to bring that health insurance premium increase down to 2.7%. In order to do that, since health insurance is a mandatory subject of bargaining, we were asking for this voluntary change, not only for the savings for the town, but I think 8.7% is an incredible amount of money to ask our employees to take on in this economy. Unfortunately, all of the unions did not vote for it, so we were not able to move forward. So unfortunately, I'm requesting authorization to sign this increase for the 8.7% increase.
Ask questions?
No, I, I think it would, I think it's a shame that people didn't take a harder look at this, because it would have been financially, if I understand it correctly at least, it would have been financially beneficial to them to have done it, and I can only assume the reason that didn't happen is that people didn't really come to a thorough understanding of what that option was to get to that lower increase. And I'll just make the observation, it's too bad that the process unfolded that way to where, I doubt very much there's anybody that was saying, "I'm going to, I'm going to insist that we go down this path because I want to be paying more for my health care." But that's kind of what happened, so it's unfortunate.
Eileen?
Yeah, same thing. It's unfortunate, but if it's where we're going, it's where we're going.
It did seem like an unfortunate result, and unfortunately, we have no choice but to go with the larger interest now. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
Vote on the MIA Health Benefits Trust renewal rate proposal, July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Mr. Murry.
Aye.
Ms. Murphy.
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Next, we're onto that MIA Health Benefits Trust renewal. No, that's what we just did. Vote to renew the annual ambulance service agreement with Metro West Medical Center. Chris?
So this is the annual agreement that Chief Carrico requests you sign. This authorizes the ambulance when they make a visit to Metro West Medical Center and they have utilized drugs onboard, they are allowed to exchange for new drugs with Metro West Medical Center. If we don't have this agreement in place, it means they must leave that hospital and go to a primary care hospital in order to reload the ambulance. So this agreement saves us a tremendous amount of time and money to have that with them. So Metro West Medical Center has been a great partner with the town of Medfield.
Those questions?
I, just an observation, I was, looked through the list of drugs and was surprised to see fentanyl on the list, which I know they use it on elephants, but I wasn't sure. If Chief Carrico had been here, I would have asked him, what do you guys use fentanyl?
I will ask him to follow up with you on that.
Yeah, okay, okay. But yeah, it's a pretty long list. The second thought I had after I got past that was, gosh, how long does it take to learn of all the, there's a pretty long list of medications, some of which I recognized, most of which I didn't. And it was just interesting. I was kind of marveling at the kind of training that ambulance personnel have to have to be able to actually even know how to administer that many different things on an emergency basis, so.
And then administer it under an incredible amount of pressure as well, so.
The only other observation I had on this is I believe this was a renewal. I didn't read the thing in detail because this was a renewal, and I assumed there was nothing significant in the terms and conditions that it changed, so. That's it.
Eileen?
No, I'm good. I think this might have been one of the first things I've been on last year. If it was, I recognize it when I started reading it.
The only comment that I would make is that the Metro West Medical Center has a legal name that is really weird. We have a motion there.
All right. Motion to vote to renew the annual ambulance service agreement with Metro West Medical Center.
Second.
Mr. Murry.
Aye.
Ms. Murphy.
Aye.
I'm an I as well, so that passes. Our next item, number nine, vote to sign the contract with Truax Corporation for annual catch basin cleaning, stormwater management MS four permit. Chris?
So this is our annual request from DPW Director Mo Goulet, and this is our annual, literally what it says, our annual catch basin cleaning that's required under that permit.
The only comment I had, as I recall, when Mo came before, the way it's worded, they clean the catch basins, they don't take what they take out.
They leave it with us.
They actually leave it with us. And I just happened to remember that's appointing day last year.
Yep. He had talked about at some point, we are going to have to have them take it offsite, and that will increase the contract significantly, but he is able to keep it onsite this year.
Eileen?
No, I'm good. No comment.
I'm fine too. Do we have a motion there, Eileen?
So we vote to sign the contract with Truax Corp. for annual catch basin cleaning for stormwater management MS four permit.
Second.
Mr. Murry.
Aye.
Ms. Murphy.
Eileen, yeah, aye.
I'm an I as well, so.
Eileen doesn't, aye, aye.
Passes. The name of, the name of Metro West, by the way, is VHS Acquisition Subsidy Number Nine Inc., Delaware Corporation.
Wow.
Our next item, number 10, vote to approve memos request to hold their annual summer concert series on Thursdays, June 15 through August 17 at the gazebo on Park outside the library and request to hang a banner announcing the concert series across Main Street at Baxter Park from June 3 through the last concert.
Yeah. Only question I have is gazebo park. Have we got a name for that yet?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so not there. And then are we allowed to hang banners across Main Street? I thought we weren't doing that anymore.
So I talked to Chief Carrico today, and he said if Russ Halassey reaches out to him, he'll make sure he can get the banner up.
Okay.
But he would like, Chief Carrico would like to have the fire department put the banner up, not the individuals from memo.
Oh, okay.
Yep. But he said he would take care of it. I must have caught him at a good moment.
Gus, did you have any questions?
Uh, nope, nope.
Do we have a motion there?
All right. Vote to approve memos request to hold their annual summer concert series on Thursday, June 15 through August 17 at the gazebo in Park outside the library and request to hang a banner announcing the concert series across Main Street at Baxter Park from June 3 through the last concert.
Second.
Mr. Murry.
Aye.
Ms. Murphy.
Aye.
Peterson's an I too, so that passes. Number 11, vote to sign letter of support for One Stop Mass Works grant application at the state hospital. Chris, is that you?
So this is, as you recall, in the LDA, there is a commitment from the town of Medfield to apply for a One Stop Mass Works grant application for the infrastructure. The roadways at the proposed development will stay public, which makes us eligible for this grant application. So this is just a, the application, I believe, is due in two weeks, so we're getting our letter of support lined up. And obviously, whereas your application, it would be, only makes sense for us to write a letter of support.
So I had, first off, totally, totally in favor of the letter of support. On the second page, I had three editing, wordsmithing kind of questions. First, the, the top paragraph talks about Trinity constructing 334 units, going to help us succeed our, our 10% SHI affordability threshold. And it says, and we expect this project to enable the town to become compliant with the MBTA Communications Act. Recognizing we don't have any final answers yet, when I read that, I said, are we still cautiously optimistic?
We are.
Or we, that's still, we think that's going to.
It is still in play.
That's huge. Okay. I want to make sure of that. There's a typo on the next paragraph, first line, town of Medfield's One Stop Mass Works Grant Application will scratch the word B, will support the construction.
A little birdie called me about that today.
Really?
He might be sitting in the background.
Birds of a feather, I see. And then, and then the only question, this is kind of interesting, now that we've renamed the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board, when we sign, should we just say Select Board or should we say Medfield Select Board?
Um, I think we usually would, would just be Select Board.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was, when I read it, that seems sort of cold and impersonal, but okay.
No, we'll just leave it as Select Board.
Okay. Those are my, those were my editorial questions. I'm absolutely in support of the letter.
I'll get those off.
Eileen, any questions, issues?
Nope. Supported the letter, no problem.
None. Should we go ahead?
All right. So vote to sign the letter of support for One Stop Mass Works Grant Application, Medfield State Hospital.
Second.
Mr. Murry.
Aye.
Ms. Murphy.
Aye.
And I'm an I as well, so that passes. Thank you. Number 12, vote to sign memorandum standing with Medfield Police League, MCOP, AFVL, CIO Level 257 dated April 18, 2023.
We're going to actually hold on this this evening.
Okay. Town meeting, discuss potential vote on Article 28 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Who's Article 28?
Citizens petition.
Ah.
Which one?
Who's going to address this?
Sorry, Pete can't see anybody in the audience. Chris McHugh is here to discuss the article.
Thank you. Please come on, Chris.
Billy, you got the mic there? Off here. Ay, ay, ay. All right. Okay, where should I start? Chris Potts, Seven Curb Street. Thank you for the hint here. So this is a citizens petition signed by a large number of people beyond the required number. I actually don't remember the total. But it's basically to see if the town will vote to amend either the town charter or the town bylaws to require a quorum of Medfield School Committee members to hold a public hearing, if not already required by law, and scheduled within 30 days on a topic within its scope of authority if requested in writing by at least 25 registered Medfield voters with signatures verified by the town clerk. And then the rest of the article, the petition outlines the notification procedures. It is also, it also specifies that the request for a hearing must be related to basically anything under the purview of school committee. I also want to clarify that the, the line, I realize this may be a little confusing now reading it again, the line that says to hold a public hearing, if not already required by law and scheduled within 30 days, is meant as a way to free the school committee from having to hold a public hearing if they already have one scheduled. So if they already have a budget hearing scheduled, there would be no ability for anybody to request a public hearing if one is already scheduled within 30 days. I think the thing that would surprise me on this, well, I'll just go back, the, the reason for this is that we've had a number of circumstances over the years where the school committee has voted on very substantial topics, issues, made substantial decisions that really should have had a public hearing but didn't. And the one that jumped out at me was they revoked the school budget back in 2018 for that 6.1%, 6.16% increase. They'd had a public hearing under the, the state law that they were required to do that, but then they revoked that, and there was no public hearing. There was, a lot of people didn't really realize that was coming. There were other examples of extending this, the elementary school day, that had enormous impact on a lot of different areas of the town. There were, with this, the last, with the pandemic funding, they were actually required by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to provide, to seek public comment, public input on how the money that they, they were going to be getting would be allocated. And this was, this was a very specific Department of Education requirement that was not a requirement of the town. It was very specific to the school spending. And there's no documentation that I can find anywhere that shows that we actually sought that public comment to determine how that money was going to be. It wasn't even a school committee agenda item. So it made me very concerned that we have significant decisions that are being made, and it was, it snowballed with this whole deciding, pushing forth the change in public comment policy. Ahead of policies that were so terribly out of compliance for years that never made it up to the top of the priority list, they jumped over all these other policies that were out of, that were out of compliance with to focus in on the public comment policy. And so, and to change a policy that had been working really well. I mean, you know, you do have these situations in other towns and communities where people, select boards, school committees, you know, they're dealing with irate people coming and really pushing the boundaries. In all my years in Medfield, in 30 years of Medfield, 10 years of going to school committee meetings, I have never seen anything like that. People are very polite here. People speak their mind. People are diplomatic. You might have, you know, you might have a little, emotions are running a little high, but I've never seen the kind of behavior in Medfield that I've, that has happened in other communities. And it was, it was a shame that they decided they were going to focus on public comment and try and change that. So all that together just said, you know, we need to have some kind of a mechanism that the community can say to the school committee, this is important to us, and we think that you should have a public hearing. And so this is where, this, this is how this came about, basically. And they do, I mean, they do have it in their policies. They specifically say that they have discretion to hold a public hearing on any topic that they feel is necessary. So how did they determine that? That's the background.
Just curious whether there, only because there's nobody here from the schools to counter that, I'm curious what the counter argument. Chris, you know how we operate here. And when I, I'm not sure that it would take 25 signatures to get me to go along with that public hearing if people cared about it and it made sense. So part of me is saying, well, this is an article that is being presented in response to a set of practices that have given rise to resentment or disagreement, which is prompting this thing. And I'm trying to, I'm trying to think of why this is a, why this, what would the counter argument even be against this is sort of where I'm coming from. And I'm sensitive to, this is focused on the schools. It would actually be a valid requirement for any department if some department or board decided it wanted to try to really squelch, the same thing would apply, it's just that it's not come up. To your point, it's not the kind of thing that typically does come up in this town. If people want to have a say, they get a say. So I'm curious if there is a counter argument that I can't think of against doing this because to me, this would practically be a policy that should be adopted by just about anybody anyway. It's unfortunate if it requires a full, you know, formal article.
Right, right.
But I, I have a hard time arguing with the, the basic intentions. Perhaps I'm a little regretful that the need is there.
Yeah. And I also, I, it's very important to me that I, that I also make this statement. You know, I've been doing this newsletter now for three years, and I've been going to pretty much every one of the meetings or watching the recordings. Christine has been amazing. Her whole team has been amazing with sending me recordings after the fact. I can honestly say, and I'm going to get emotional saying this, our boards and committees in town are unbelievable, the way they operate in terms of the, the level of, you know, willingness to let people say a few things, maybe a couple, you know, a couple exceptions here or there. But, but overall, it has been the most wonderful experience to go to all these meetings and to see how everybody operates. And it is, it makes me feel really good about our town operations. And, and I really, I do, and I'm not saying this to be, you know, with the phrases, but Christine is doing it, I mean, her team is, has really been great, and I so appreciate, you know, I can go into her, to her with questions. I can't believe how fast she gets back to me. The responsiveness is really.
She doesn't have anything to do.
Phenomenal. I mean, it really, I, I, I've been saying this to people the last week or so because I just, it blows me away with everything on her plate, being short-staffed. It is really impressive. And so I use that as a point of comparison with the school committee because I go and I see the complete opposite. And it's, it is, it bothers me as a citizen of this town and to know that ultimately our students are impacted by that. And, you know, I, I'm not set on the 25 signatures. To me, it could be 50, it could be 75. I just want to feel like there's a little bit more impetus for the community to be able to say, this matters to us. We want you to put it on the agenda, even if it's a matter of putting it on the agenda. But, you know, a public hearing has a little bit, there's no law around public hearings other than being embedded in a regular meeting notice. But there's really no, the Attorney General's Office for the open meeting law, you, you will see in their determinations when people have filed complaints about public hearings, their response is, we have no jurisdiction over public hearings, other than it of being affected by a meeting notice, minutes, but other than that, they have no jurisdiction. So there's really nothing in Massachusetts that is, that's governing public hearings. So. You may not be able to see. Mark wants to say something.
Eileen, did you have any questions, issues?
Mark just raised his hand to ask a question or make a comment.
Oh, I can't see Mark.
That's why I figured he'd be here.
Go ahead, Mark.
So there are significant procedural and substantive legal issues with this petition. From a policy standpoint, in the abstract, as you're talking about it, that's one thing, but legality wise, both in terms of the procedure that needs to be followed and the underlying law, there are issues with this.
Like what?
So first of all, and this is not a secret because I met with the applicants while the town meeting warrant was still open, if a citizen or a group of citizens is going to petition to amend the charter, there is separate statutory process. One fundamental part of that is that the town meeting, the following town meeting has to be at least six months after the filing date of that petition. The petition was filed in January, so it was clearly beyond, the town meeting was going to occur too early to do it for the annual town meeting. So that's to amend the charter. Legality. Legality wise is a question whether you could even put this into a charter because when the AG reviews the charter amendments, they have to find that they're consistent with state law. Their position has been consistently, and there's a number of opinions from various municipalities with bylaws as well as charter amendments, that elected boards of essentially the executive branch, there's a separation of powers issue. So town meeting cannot dictate blanket to board a select, select board or school committee, whatever, as an elected body, how to run their meetings when they are coming from a different, those boards have their own separate authority. So I seriously question whether this would pass muster with the Attorney General. The alternative, a bylaw procedurally, and again, it was pointed out, it needed to be informed to either insert in an existing bylaw or submit it as a new bylaw as opposed to the format. And then substantively, frankly, the bylaw is even more questionable than a charter amendment. I'm almost certain a bylaw amendment would not pass muster with the Attorney General's Office based on the several decisions I've seen. And the issue that a similar bylaw was submitted, if not by this group, some of the same people are early in COVID, was taken off the warrant because of the COVID procedures, but at that time I had reached out and was led to believe that it, and that was directed to board of select, the then Board of Selectmen as well, and was led to believe it would not pass because of that separation of powers issue. Also, the open meeting law is very clear in its terms that nobody has a right to speak at a meeting, it's solely within the discretion of the public body's chair. So that's, again, that's, so it's not consistent with state law.
Okay, so the differentiation, just to go back when I met with town council on that petition, that first petition, the distinction, well, I think that was in Franklin, Mark, the distinction was that that particular petition had to do with public comment and because there is actually law on the books that the chair controls public comment, that's, that that was why it was ruled, but there is no, there's no law around public hearings. So they could have a standalone public hearing and if it's positioned as a public hearing and not as a regular, regular meeting, that they, that there are sort of Robert's rules around public hearings and not as a meeting.
So, Mark, I want to make sure I understand what you said. First, if this kind of a requirement were to pass, it would have to either pass as a charter amendment or as a bylaw. But your skepticism about it passing as a bylaw is that basically, and I'm sympathetic to this because of the school building committee bylaw that was telling the Board of Selectmen who they had to appoint. And it was a subtle, there was a subtle distinction I've raised with you around, it's one thing to say, for instance, the warrant committee will put somebody forward to the town moderator, that doesn't mean the town moderator can't reject that nominee, say, now that's not, you know, in other words, if you're just an appointing authority that gets told by a board or by a committee who you're going to appoint, then what's the point? But I think what you're saying is, so for that reason, a bylaw wouldn't work because you basically do have a government, an elected governing body called the school committee that has by law authority vested in it. So having a provision in an article that tells that school committee what it needs to do, or it could be, it could, same thing would apply to us, telling them how they need to operate would probably not pass muster at the state because nobody has the legal authority to override the law that vested that committee in the first place with the authority that has. Is that kind of where?
As I said, it's what you would commonly understand at a different governmental level as separation of powers.
Yeah.
Town meeting is a legislative body, everybody else is the executive branch. And in the executive branch, the elected parts of it at least have, have authority emanating from either state law, state statutes, or court decisions in some cases, or the charter, which the charter is kind of up here and the bylaws are down here.
Mm-hmm, right.
So the charter, there's more discretion to push the envelope, if you will, which is why I said you might be able to have a charter position, a charter provision requiring public hearings, although even that, given the analysis that I've read in a number of Attorney General decisions, it's consistent. I question whether they would consider that to be consistent with state law. But certainly at the bylaw, at the, at the bylaw level, this, this will not pass with the Attorney General.
And the reason a citizen's petition for the town meeting can get by is because that's actually a legislative act being brought before the town meeting, which is a legislature.
It's allowed by the, first of all, general law is chapter 39, which governs town meetings, makes specific provision for citizen petitions, both for the annual and for special. So that, there is a provision and unfortunately, it just basically lays out a very bare-bones process and then has left it to, and it's been on the books for tens of dozens of years, goes way, way, way back. And they've left it to the courts to flesh out what's permissible and what's not. Attorney General is given general oversight of municipal bylaws and charter amendments to make a determination now whether they like it or they don't like it, but strictly their standard of review is, is this consistent with federal and state law? That's all they look at.
And there's no provision, I probably watch too much of the Vikings TV series, I guess. There's no provision for, what I guess I would say, for citizens to come together and petition for public redress, which is not focused on school committee or anything, but merely, there's no legal provision that allows the citizens of a country or of a, of a town or the residents of a town to come together and petition, I'm going to call it public redress, basically voice, you know, their concerns about how a town operates.
You do have provisions, we have them, there are probably better ones, but A, you have recall, if you're not happy with your officials, you can have them removed from office.
Yep.
That actually was used in the case of the school committee way, way back in the seventies?
Early eighties, I think it was. Ninety, ninety-two.
So you've got that and there's also, I don't know if we have, but some municipalities in their charter have initiative provisions that allow you to pass legislation. There's also a similar provision that allows legislation to be rescinded. In both those cases, again, that's something that could be in the charter, if it is or not, I don't know, it's off the top.
And that probably wouldn't address this anyway.
So what's interesting, I just recently found Mass Municipal Association has about an hour and a half webinar on home rule petitions and speak, the featured speakers on that was town council from Arlington. Arlington has a lot of citizen petitions and also the, the woman from Mass Municipal Law, who is the one who is the point person to review these. I also consulted with ACLU and what I got back was that there were mechanisms that would, that would, simple amendments to this article that would probably allow it to, what I gather, would allow it to fly. And the, the end of the day, the woman from Mass Municipal Law really made a closing argument that her, I mean, basically what, what Mark just said was that their rule, their, their position is only looking at if there's any kind of conflict, basically with, with state law, with the constitution, with federal law. And that, and I, I looked through their determinations as well on other citizen's petitions and other bylaws and charter petitions. And ultimately, they came back with guidance on what would be the next step. If, if there were questions around procedural issues around filing for a charter or filing a bylaw, there would be, you know, specifically around charter, there would be guidance on next steps. So, but I was very, it was really wonderful to hear from, from Arlington and from, from the, you know, the municipal law unit, sort of their viewpoint on these and how Arlington in particular was talking about how a lot of these citizen petitions are now getting filed with sort of like dual, dual paths. So, you know, I, I just think a lot of it, and a comment, a comment was made on basically how, how complicated it really is. You know, this was a Mass Municipal webinar and I'm sitting there listening to it, feeling better that I was, you know, among the people that are confused and everybody else listening are people that are actually sitting in these, you know, seats, so.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I'm sympathetic to the specific issue you're concerned about, but I am also sensitive to being on an elected board that has a set of responsibilities and authority, having people want to erode it over specific issues.
Absolutely.
So I, I kind of, I'm hearing Mark's legal arguments and I'm taking them seriously as a practical matter about this particular thing, not on the, not on the specific merits of the issue, but on the legal merits of the circumstances.
So the only thing I, I want to ask before I give you the mic, Jerry, is
He won't say anything.
Is, in the spirit of what I believe this is intended to do, is to give the citizens of Medfield a voice when the opportunity may have been the ship has sailed. And this is saying, no, we, it doesn't mean it may change the result, but I think the one thing that we, we don't want citizens in this town to think, what has to do with our board or any other board, is that they don't have a voice. And, and I can appreciate what you're saying, Mark, that we could put this up for vote and the town, the state could come back in August and September and say, this is denied. But personally, I sit here and I'm listening to this conversation, I would, I personally would like to support this because if in the town meeting, this votes unanimously, if that doesn't send a signal that this town is vested, this town has a voice, and again, people can agree to disagree all day long, that's fine, but please at least let people speak and to not be given that opportunity is, I just fundamentally stand against that. So I appreciate what you're saying, Mark, and if we go forward with this and it gets voted on and it passes and then we find out it, like, sorry, it can't go forward, I'd like to think a message was sent. I'll leave it at that.
Jerry Potts, also Seven Curved Street. So I guess I'm, I'm looking for clarification on, and you started by saying, Gus, the school building bylaw that passed at town meeting, that didn't get shot down by the Attorney General. So I don't know what the difference is here. You know, that was mandating what, what the board, you know, the select board could do, gave restrictions on that, came from town meeting and a bylaw passed and, well, I mean, it, it did. I mean, they, they had restrictions on who they could appoint. So what's the difference between this and that, which did pass, that we, we not deny it?
That simply set up, that was a bylaw that set up a committee and set up a, identified what the composition would be of the committee. It had nothing to do with how the Board of Selectmen or the school committee run their meetings.
Well, but they had to determine, they were limited.
It authorized them to make the appointments, that's all.
If, if that bylaw had said, the Board of Selectmen will appoint the designee dictated by the Warrant Committee and Planning Board, Furniture Planning Building Committee, I would have, I would have refused because I have, if I have appointment authority, that means I have judgment and discretion in what I do. Now, the fact that the composition of the board
That's what I mean.
was one thing, but that's a, that's, what I'm getting at is that, that's a broader, it's not telling me who I have to appoint, it's saying that you're responsible for appointing people with these qualities. Probably if, if it had some outrageous, you know, we need the animal control officer to be on this, I probably wouldn't resist that because I wouldn't have understood the logic exactly. But I was okay with having someone come, I actually disagreed technically with the Warrant Committee only because it was a voting member, but I, you know, that was Scott's problem. You know, it wasn't like the town is dictating to me what I must do as a, as a member of the select board. It did, it did put some boundaries around the kind of people that we were going to appoint and I certainly
More fundamental than that, the town meeting cannot impair how you, the elected select board runs your meetings.
That's, that's the issue, yeah.
Or the school committee, whatever, it just, it's just not
And Eileen, to your comment, the thing that I wrestle with is that, like, like you, I guess, philosophically, the more public participation and discussion I like, to the point where I'm okay with long meetings that go late into the night. And so from that standpoint, I'm sympathetic, but I'm also sensitive to, the school committee is its own governing board that you could make an argument actually has a greater span of control over this town by virtue of the size of the schools versus the town. And I want to make sure that for my position on this at least, I'm very sensitive about intruding on their authority to the points that you're making because I actually wouldn't want to see that coming the other way, that suddenly there's this other governing board, if you will, that's second guessing what we do. I
And I'm not, just to be clear, I have not conferred with them, they have their own legal counsel
Right.
and I'm not weighing in on that.
Right.
I'm looking at the broader issue, as soon as you get into these relationships, the Attorney General has opined in multiple decisions where these types of issues have arisen in other municipalities and there's been an attempt at a remedy.
So to Eileen's point about the vote that would show the overwhelming support
Won't make any difference at all.
If this were a nine, no, if this were a non-binding article expressing the desires of the town, then it would, it wouldn't require legal, it would, it wouldn't be
You could do a non-binding, absolutely.
Do a non-binding to get what Eileen's talking about and that might be, might get the point across because if, even if it passes, if it's passed in a bad faith environment, it's not going to
So I guess the good news on that is we're 50/50 on the, on the non-binding. And the, the 50% that was in favor ended up doing the bylaw for the school building committee that passed at town meeting and Mike Markucci worked well on that and the select board and everyone took that seriously and moved ahead. Unfortunately, the other non-binding was ignored by the school committee. And so this is coming up, she won't say it, I'll say it, because I've attended seven years of those meetings, that when it comes to public input, we have been begging for consistent public input. So this is not just a flash in the pan. Literally, we've been cut off in more meetings raising issues and questions. And the remarkable thing for me was this last go-around of cutting discussion before a vote is taken. Their point is, you can speak at the beginning of a meeting, well, that's great, but if you're talking about something two hours from now and you've had a robust discussion on it and we want to chime in before you vote, they were going to not allow that. So how could I know what they're going to talk about in two hours? So there was no redress for that. So this idea of, you know, is this going to happen a lot? I actually don't think so. I think by having this, it's going to force in open meetings, more listening to the public, which is really what the point of this is. Now, they can still disagree and, and we're not diminishing any of their ability to make whatever decisions, but unfortunately, it's happening because there's a consistent and persistent behavior by that committee that diminishes public input. Now, they will disagree with this and they will say, I actually heard what they said, they hadn't read this and they made comments about, well, this could impact possible policy if people don't like it. No, it's about things that come in front of the school committee that are serious. And it diminishes, even by saying that, it diminishes what the intent of this is, which is, on serious issues that the town cares about, give the opportunity for everyone on both sides to have a voice. And, you know, I, whether it passes with the Attorney General or not, I think it's important to put this forward as sort of a litmus test to the town and then each committee can do and if the Attorney General shoots it down, but hopefully it's a, it's a sign to them that they need to be more transparent and more engaging with, with the public. And I wish it was different, I wish we didn't have to even raise these issues, but I've been cut off a lot, so let's just, you know, and again, I've never been disrespectful to them, I've never been disrespectful in public meetings, I disagree, I'm passionate about what I've said, but, but the idea that you can get cut off. And the final thing I'll say, the school building after that bylaw passed at town meeting to, you know, to reconsider, we asked for a public hearing and what we got was a meeting where we were cut off repeatedly because we didn't control the agenda. So that's a perfect example of, we wanted a public dialogue to talk about this and we reached out to that we reached out to that committee, and we're told, oh, well, you can't have your own private meeting. We're going, no, we want a public meeting that we are free to voice without getting cut off, and you're controlling the agenda on a really important topic, and we still couldn't get it done. So I'm less hopeful without some kind of teeth behind it, and, you know, and again, I don't think, whether Chris said 25 or 50 or whatever, if there's something that's important to the town, I'm just hoping we have forums to be able to articulate it, so...
See, when you're not physically present in the room...
Is there any more discussion in the room, or is that it?
Did you have any?
I, I mean, I, I want to hear from the school about this issue, I, I've listened to Mark, and I understand that this is problematic legally, you know, the town, the town meeting can go ahead and opt to pass it regardless of the fact that it's legally problematic. The idea of people being heard is certainly a, a good cause, and we should be allowing people to be heard, and I've heard what the, what Gary and Chris have said about not being heard at the school committee, so. So I think that, you know, this will go to, we'll get input from the schools, from the school committee, I'm sure. Is there anything else that we need to do tonight on this, Chris?
Pete, can I just make just a note, if you happen to look at the school committee tape from the last meeting, just realize that they were never given a copy of the petition in their meeting packet, and so they were talking off the cuff about what their reaction was based on what was told to them at that time, the other night, so, and they did not have accurate information, which was disturbing, and I was sitting in the audience, I was the only one at the meeting, and I could have clarified it, but was really not given the opportunity, so.
Okay. I don't, I don't... It was unexpected for me here on the remote, all of a sudden Chris became much better, so Mike must have increased your mic somehow.
I don't know...
Are we finished with this issue then, everybody?
I don't know if this comment is helpful, but right now, I agree with Pete, I'd like to kind of hear from the schools on their, on the view on this, for sure. I would be reluctant to be against what you're trying to promote by way of public speak, you know, public input, and I would be reluctant to be in favor of an article that, from a legal standpoint, basically is seeking to attack or erode the authority of the school committee, independent of how they operate. So right now, where I'm at right now is a position of neutrality, that just says, I'm not gonna, with what I understand right now, I would not move to try to undermine the authority of the school committee, regardless of what I think of how the school committee is handling public discussion, but I also wouldn't come out and oppose the effort to try to promote more public discussion. So, that's sort of where I'm, I'm at right now, not final point, but for what it's worth.
What do you need the most from you?
No, I mean, I, I'm a fan of, I support in the spirit of what this is all about, and if at the end of the day, at the town meeting, it becomes a discussion so that people can get up at a mic and say what they're for and what they're against, I'm not discrediting what you said, Mark, at all. I, I, I'm not looking to waste anyone's time, but I think it's, it's a conversation, it can be a healthy dialogue, because we've had a rather contentious, this has got nothing to do with what the building of Dale Street versus, like, at all, just some contentious conversations that have gone on in this town about some decisions that just sprung out of the school, and these are parents that have kids, like, conversations need to be had, so it's not belittling anybody's role, but it is reinforcing. I would, I would not want to sit in this chair and have somebody out there feel like, I cut them off, I don't want to hear from them, move on, like, that's not what I'm here for. So.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. Our next item is the 2023 Town Meeting Logistics. Chris, are you gonna...
So I just wanted to, to give you an update, we all, we will be in the gymnasium for the annual town meeting, and there will be space available in the library, as we've done in the past, for anybody who is immunocompromised or is a senior and would like to be socially distanced in the library, we will be setting that up as well.
So no cafeteria, just...
No cafeteria right now, we just gym and the library.
No Woodstock outside?
No. I am all set with that. That's it, I just wanted to give everybody an update on that. Yep.
Thank you. Our next item then is the consent agenda.
Actually, I think we have citizens' comment first, and Chris had called today to say she wanted to be heard under citizens' comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that, you know, I was thinking that was our citizens' comment here. All right, go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to just bring up, you know, as, again, as I had mentioned earlier, and I've been doing this newsletter now for three years, and I, I put a lot of pressure on myself to make sure that what I write is accurate, that is based on facts, and hence the reason that I'm always now reaching out to Christine to ask tons of questions and get more information, and to get clarification on things. And she sets me straight when I've got something wrong, which is very helpful, and so do other people who, in this town. But I really, I put a lot of pressure on myself to do that, I really care about having things being accurate. So it, it upsets me when I come to certain, when I go to certain public meetings, and people who are in positions of power are actually saying things that are factually inaccurate. And there's really, I don't feel like in those cases that there's any, there's not a sense of responsibility for people in these positions to sort of take ownership of it and to correct themselves. I mean, as a matter of course, when I do the newsletter, if I get something wrong, I always run a correction, you know, to make sure that people know that it was wrong and I'm correcting it. I think that from a citizen's standpoint, when they go to these meetings, they put a lot of faith in our elected officials, and rightfully so. I mean, nine times out of 10, you know, everything that's, what's said is valid or whatever, but every once in a while, when you hear a comment being made that you know for a fact it's not factually correct, is just upsetting. It almost, I feel like as part of the goals for this town, we should be trying to impart upon our towns, our boards and committees, to try their best to back up what they, what they say with, with documentation, or at a minimum, bring an expert in to, to comment. I'll give you an example, this recent discussion on the private wells, there were comments made about that, that it would have taken two seconds for anybody to go to the Executive Office of, what's the name of it, sorry, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, to see that they specifically advocate for measures to control private wells. And yet, we had people who spoke up, representing town boards, who said the opposite at, at one, I'm not going to call out a particular meeting, but there was a comment made that was completely factually inaccurate, and the person who said it really didn't have any, any professional knowledge to be able to say that, and the discussion that happened as part of that was all based on not having any of this factual information. So it was just, you know, it was just, again, sitting there saying, where's the opportunity for somebody to raise their hand and say, that's not correct, or that's not true? You know, and I also think that with that particular article, that it's really the Board of Health that has the full authority to regulate, it's not the Water and Sewer Board, but with private wells, it's the Board of Health that has the authority to, if, if, if they see a health issue with, with droughts and public health issues, they do have the, the authority to be able to call, call restrictions. And that wasn't, you know, Board of Water and Sewer really doesn't have any jurisdiction over private wells, Board of Health does. So there's just things like that, so I just wanted to mention that, so.
Thank you. That's a donor, is that a role that used to be served by newspapers, before they died? Next item is the consent agenda. Medfield Food Company requests to post signs in the usual locations from May 8 to 14, advertising their Stamp Out Under Food Drive. Next, New Life Furniture Bank requests to place signs advertising their annual five-page trail run at the State Hospital at the usual locations from April 29 to May 13. Finally, the gazebo players of Medfield request to place sandwich boards at the intersection of North and Main, advertising the 21st Summer of Shakespeare in the Park from July 17 to July 30. Oh, there's another one, one-day liquor license for St. Edward's Church on May 13 from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
You know if that last one is, is that liquor or beer and wine, just out of curiosity?
They actually can have liquor as a nonprofit, they can have alcohol.
So it doesn't matter.
My issue is what day of the week is that? Is that a Saturday?
Only not a Sunday.
As long as it's not, well, yeah, probably isn't, but, it's just before noon, that's my only concern.
It's a Saturday.
Okay.
Yeah.
A nonprofit can have a one-day for all alcohol.
Yeah.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
I don't know either, well. Meeting minutes, I haven't had a chance to look at those, I'm afraid, so we will hold on those. Town Minister updates...
Eileen, I think is the only one who squared away on that, I haven't looked at them either, so.
And I did the first week, so that's okay.
Just a couple of things tonight under Town Minister updates. One, we have a town meeting coming up on May 1st, I'm just gonna keep saying that to everybody. We got great news today, Brittany found out, we are celebrating our 10-year anniversary of being approved for Tree City, which is great news, so we're hoping for some updated signage that should be coming in the mail to us. Keep your eye out this weekend, your warrant report should be in your mailboxes, and rumor has it, they are Medfield blue this year.
Nice.
Just a rumor, we'll see. And the other thing I'm pleased to report is the Planning Board has filed their Medfield State Hospital approval with the town clerk today, so things are moving forward. Yeah. That's it for this evening. You're welcome.
Next meeting, day one, is the annual town meeting, then on May 8, then May 13, the Select Board is meeting. Mr. Murphy, Select Board reports.
Yeah, just, just on the topic of the town meeting, so, unlike this article, we still have a few articles we haven't voted on, but this'll, probably, this is our last meeting before the first, so anything that we haven't voted on yet, we won't have voted on.
You will have a short meeting...
Just before.
Just before.
Yeah, just before, so we might, okay.
Yeah, but in the warrant report, you're listed as will be heard.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had, last week was busy, the, the Planning Board meeting, it's the final one on April 15th, which the only thing that was left to do was for us to approve the Affordable Housing paperwork, which we did in our meeting on Tuesday, and the, and then on top of that, went to the school strategic planning, visioning, or, or focus group meeting, which was interesting, and then following that, the Warrant Committee and, and Select Board meeting. Chris, I'm not sure which of those discussions you were talking about with the wells, but I actually thoroughly enjoyed the Warrant Committee's discussion of the wells, and the thing that I did, there's enough, there's enough conservative in me that I actually appreciated hearing Warrant Committee members talk about private property and the, and the limits of state control over private property. So the issue of what's aquifer and what ties in and what matters, those things were all technical issues, but it was kind of nice to hear the deliberation, it's probably the closest I've felt like I've been at a public meeting that was something like what Thomas Jefferson and John Adams would have had, that I've been to in a long, long time, so I actually thought that, I just was impressed with the thoughtfulness they had. On Wednesday, the Norfolk County Advisory Board had their meeting, where they presented their budget for the, for the county budget, which I'm slowly coming up the learning curve on, because it takes a while to learn how budgets are, work, and theirs is, the county works a little bit better. Having been to several of the Norfolk County Advisory Board meetings now, so there's representatives from all the towns in Norfolk County who formed the advisory board, and it's an advisory board, but the commissioners are there, I have to say, I, when I went into it, I, because the county is such an amorphous, unknown, we don't see it, I sort of came in with low expectations for what I was gonna find at the county level, and my reaction in the times that I've seen the, at least at the advisory board meetings I've been to, I've actually been impressed with our general county officials, how they do things, they're, they're way too polite to all of us in terms of, you know, just how deferential they are in terms of listening to people. There's a lot, and the people that are on the advisory board, coming from individual towns, aren't afraid to go and throw stuff back in their face if there's issues. So for what it's worth, for anybody who, like me, didn't know a whole lot about Norfolk County and how it was run, I actually have been increasingly more impressed with how our county government works, as I've understood a little bit more of what they're all about. So, I've actually started to really enjoy it, it was like, these guys are actually thoughtful and they're, they're doing a good job. There's plenty of current controversy out there, if anybody is following the registered deeds, you'll know there's plenty of controversy, that's, so it's not all smooth sailing, but I've actually been impressed, it's a, with the just general caliber of, of the people there and how they run things, and they're, probably partly because their budget for this coming year was pretty modest in its growth, and as a former Warrant Committee member, I like modest growth in budgets, so that was also good. And I think that's all I had for...
So, I trailed you on quite a few of those, so the Planning Board meeting was very good last Monday night, and then the Warrant Committee meeting, I, I will echo your sentiment, and I give Steve Callahan so much credit, he pulled me aside and he was apologizing, I'm like, oh my goodness, there's no apologies, it was a healthy discussion, I will never, everyone has a right to their opinion, and I thought there was really good dialogue back and forth, so, no problem whatsoever. And that conversation's long overdue, so I was thrilled we finally had it. And then I thought the strategic planning session, again, good dialogue in that, the gentleman that hosted it did a really nice job. Last Thursday night, we had the Affordable Housing Trust meeting, Kathy Boyle had a chance to present the feedback from the survey that she conducted, I think they surveyed about 78 families in and around the Boston area, excuse me, in and around Medfield, and I believe, and maybe Brittany knows the answer to this, if the presentation that Kathy shared, if we have that on file anywhere?
I'll have to find out.
Because if we could post that, I found it really helpful, we also have designated, found a couple of pieces of property in town that we will continue to explore for both, one piece of property would be for a Habitat for Humanity home, and then a other one would be for the group home, or, or we called it a supported home, and that has to do with the legalities of whether it's acknowledged by the state or more of a private entity, so support home is more of a private entity, but really good, I thought, great conversation, and I feel like we're getting some momentum behind getting closer to being able to build a Habitat for Humanity home, and even that much closer to getting a, a group home here in the, the town of Medfield. And then, I actually just saw your reply, so the letter, and I do just want to acknowledge this in public, that Linda Donovan sent a letter to the Board of Selectmen to a variety of groups in town, brought some concerns that had been going on with the fence between the road in, in her development and abiding in Phil Meadows, so I just saw you forward that to Gary, so I'm glad we're just acknowledging that, so, so as a citizen, she knows that that just didn't fall down a well.
Can you send me a copy of that? Because I've been driving by there, I've, I've talked with Donovan's a number of times, I finally saw the gate go up, and the first day I saw it, it was closed, the second day it was open, and every time I've driven by since, it's been open. And I actually think, aside from Gary, it's probably Chief Carrico, there's an issue, there's a dispute there around whether the gate gets locked from the outside so that if the fire trucks need to get in, they can unlock the gate, or whether the gate is locked on the inside, so if people want to open the gate to get out, that way they can get out, but I think the proper purpose of that lock was to allow the fire department to have access, and that was not how it was set up before the gate came down.
Yes, and I met with Gary this afternoon, he's headed out there tomorrow, and he will contact the developer and they will start addressing it. Some of it is, we're getting towards the end, and a lot of the landscaping has not been finalized, but we will address that.
Yeah, that's good. And I mean, and the owner of the development, I mean, this is where I'm concerned, I want to make sure that people who want to come and build in Medfield, build all you want, just follow the rules, and if you're abiding Medfield residents, we just want to... just follow the rules, and if you're abiding Medfield residents, we just want to respect that. So, I'm sure, I have 100% faith in Gary that he'll take care of it, but thank you for acknowledging that.
Chris, there were also some very serious flooding issues there from Donovan's property. Have those been resolved?
Uh, Gary will deal with the developer on that, and Mo will address it when he gets back from, uh, his conference.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else I need?
Uh, no, that should do it. Thank you.
All right. I was at the, uh, planning board hearing on the Trinity Financial, uh, let's say, hospital project. I was also at the school strategic planning focus group. In addition to those, I was at the Medfield Foundation's Legacy Fund pitch-in event. Four groups, uh, asked for grant money from the foundation, which we're in there in the process of deciding that tonight, actually, I've been scheduled tonight to make those decisions. And I also attended the energy committee meeting after the pitch-it ended. And that's it for me. Um, Chris, actions taken on bills and warrants for payments?
There were none.
Okay. Informational, anything there that was highlighted?
Nope. It's available.
Need a motion to, who's running that?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
And the other question. Thank you for letting me participate for half the time.
How are you feeling, Pete?
I'm feeling okay. 100%, but, I'm not there because I'm in COVID lockdown, so.
Hopefully, you feel better.
Acquired COVID at one of those meetings, I think, that I went to last week.
This rambling, I mean, this-
All right. All right. Good night, everyone.
Good night.